All right, well.
You guys here, how do you want to? This is from the meeting.
All right, um, welcome, everybody. I would like to take a moment here and welcome the two newest board members here on the Board of Selectmen, Tim DeBrio and Steve Welch. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler can't make it today. He's stuck in Chicago. So, uh, that being said, I'd like to, if the rest of the board members are okay with it, postpone, um, any committee appointments and/or, uh, Chair and Vice Chair, so that everybody has a say on the next meeting, if everybody's good with that.
No worries here. Sounds good by me.
Okay. I think it'd be fair to everybody have a say in it, so.
We'll start with the pledge.
Yep, we're gonna start with the pledge, thank you.
We'll wait for everybody. Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice.
Thank you. So, a couple of things, um, you know, leading up to this last election, it was a very decisive, uh, divisive one, so I would hope, you know, going forward, that the members, to include those who are sitting on the board right now, whatever your politics are, whether it's an R after your name, or a D after your name, or an I after your name, that we are all here for one thing, the betterment of the community, and that we leave our politics at the door. Uh, that we all come together to ensure that we're looking out for the best interests of this community. In my opinion, I believe this community is a community of one. Um, that being said, um, I just want this board to be a cohesive board moving forward. And then, some of you may already know, uh, we have an town employee that has been placed on administrative leave. Uh, there's been multiple complaints, several complaints brought against that individual. Uh, we will not be speaking on that tonight, because it's in preliminary stages of an investigation. We cannot comment on what the complaints are, nor the in-depth of the investigation. The two new board members will be briefed as to what they are, uh, when we go into non-public. But as far as the, uh, the employee goes, we, uh, it's a personnel issue, and we don't discuss personnel issues in public. So that being said, we're gonna roll right into the rest of the business of, uh, the town, and we're gonna start with payroll of four-three, or four, April 4th, we have.
I got it here.
You got there? Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, did you guys? I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the payroll for four-three, I mean, yeah, for four-four, and the manifesto for four-three.
Second.
Second.
Uh, motion made by John Moran, seconded by, uh, Tim DeBrio. All in favor? State your name.
Steve Welch.
Aye.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Yeah. Uh, just for the purpose of that, is so that we have somebody who takes minutes at home, so, uh, we'll be calling out who, who made the motion, as well as who seconded, and then when we, we'll state if you nay or yea, uh, going forward, you state your name. Public meetings on March 20th and the 23rd. Did you have any issues with that?
No, because only me and you, I mean, we don't have a court.
No, so we'll, uh, postpone that for the next, next meeting, as well as the non-public. Uh, as I mentioned before, we're gonna postpone any assigned boards and committees. Now, I mean, nothing's really going on at this time, right, anyway. Um, so we'll roll right into Town Administrator Report.
Okay, um. Do you wanna hold off on the subsequent meeting schedule as well, or do you wanna review that tonight?
It is what it is. We have to change and we add dates. We change and add dates, but I'll just have something posted for everybody to see.
Okay. As it's posted right now, um, to resume the regular schedule, your meeting again next Monday, the 10th, and then it's on week, off a week.
I would like to see it the first and third, so we commit. What does the rest of the board think about that?
First and third work the best for me. I have other commitments sometimes in the second, but.
All right.
Works for me.
There we go. Sounds like you need a motion or anything like that, or? Or, Joe, we're good with that?
There you go.
I think you're good. Okay, um, the 350 utility plow truck is frequently breaking down, needs to be replaced. The plan was to use the additional highway block funds from 2022, which came in from Senate Bill 401. Um, they did not lapse, so Sean has, um, reached out to a couple of dealers, and I believe it's Gropone that he was able to find one on the lot readily available. Uh, we signed a letter of commitment last week just to hold it until the 5th of this month, and, um, the question is, is would you like to proceed with purchasing it? There's a memo attached to my report that outlines the cost. Um, you had originally approved up to $75,000 to fully outfit it with a plow, spray liner, and to install a new two-way radio. We're looking at a total cost of $76,430.84.
So, is this a regular pickup truck, or is this a utility body truck?
Um, it's a utility body, I believe.
Okay, so the spray and bed liner is for inside of the, uh, the utility body?
Hold on, I have the quote.
The typical Rhino liner sticking in there.
But, um. I just wanna reconfirm that this is coming from state funds and not necessarily from...
That is correct. So, the Senate Bill 401, um, there was two portions that was based on, um, roads, and then the other portion was municipally owned bridges, so we received an allocation for those two, so it would be coming from the highway funds.
I understand the necessity of needing another truck, however, I hope going forward that, uh, we have a program in place for better maintenance of these vehicles, to ensure the, uh, the lifespan of these vehicles. We're not seem to be getting the, uh, longevity out of them that we should, but I don't oppose it, if anybody's...
Who's doing, um, maintenance presently?
Uh, I believe it's Alan's garage, or, or the other garage over here by Lyers.
Okay. Routinely, oil change every 30, $3,000?
There's not a program in place for that, but I believe that they, they've been following that to some degree.
Okay. Maybe we do need to, um, address that at some point.
Yeah, but.
But in the meantime. Say we gotta do something, so.
John?
Well, we need the truck.
Okay, Tim?
Yep.
All right, do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Steve, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, expend the money to, um, purchase a Ford F-350. I'm assuming it's a Ford F-350?
Yep.
Do you need to know where the funds are coming from in the motion?
Uh, we probably should, yes. So it would be from the highway block funds.
Coming from the highway block fund, so a motion to purchase F-350 out of Gropone Ford, funds coming out of the highway block fund.
I'll second.
All right, we have, uh, a motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by John Moran. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next on my list, uh, the gas furnace at the recycling center had failed. The vents were properly installed, improperly installed, and an internal furnace part had cracked that cannot be replaced. Uh, we have since installed a new one and corrected the vents. Shall the board vote to request the funds from the trustee of trust funds of Town Maintenance Fund?
I don't think we have a choice.
No, we don't have a choice in the matter, but, but, but here, here's another prime example where, you know, we don't have a, uh, adequate maintenance plan in place, but that's my understanding, we do now have a person that, so going forward, this shouldn't be an issue.
Correct.
Right, so.
Weren't they maintained regularly, on a regular basis? Now, whether they're doing the proper job of maintenance, maintenance, is another question, which I'm not...
There, uh, there, there was a co- company that was contracted for that, however, they did not live up to their, um, you know, agreement.
Okay.
There was a clause that was put in there, uh, but doesn't need to hear there now, so.
Can never look back?
No, we're gonna keep moving forward.
Move forward.
If someone would like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to request the funds from the trustee of, of the trust funds from the Town Maintenance Fund to pay for the new furnace at the recycling center.
Furnace or?
Tim, you're right.
I'll second it.
Says furnace and vents.
Okay. All right, uh, Tim DeBrio made a motion, seconded by Steve Welch. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous?
And I don't have a lot of background on these, because this was all established before I got here, but, um, the cost for the frozen pipes and a new well pump at the town offices came to $6,320. Will the board vote to request those funds from the trustee of trust funds from the town building expendable trust?
Any discussion on that?
So what was that for? Read that again.
Um, frozen pipes and a new well pump here at the town office.
Pack it right there with your, the dates on, no, the one right there. Raise your hand, flip it over.
Have some reason, don't worry.
Makes it easier.
Yep.
So we've already done the repairs, it's just a matter of requesting the funds, so that it doesn't hit the operating budget.
Anybody have any questions on it?
No.
Nope.
I make a motion, um, to expend the funds of $6,320 from the Town Maintenance Fund.
Second.
We have a motion made by John Moran, seconded by Steve Welch. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Motion passed.
Okay. Um, sadly, last week I was contacted by the Department of Revenue, uh, I think it was on Monday. Uh, there was some legislative changes that caused all towns that are offering the veterans' tax credit to re-adopt their credit language on this year's warrant. Um, we did so, however, we've, the town of Nottingham has also adopted the all-veterans' tax credit, which is a supplemental. Um, that portion of it got left off the town warrant, so what that means is, we have 30 veterans that are currently receiving the all-veterans' tax credit, um, which equates to $22,500 in credits annually. So, our options to correct this, unfortunately, are to either hold a special town meeting, um, and we're gonna have to work out the details of that, because we are SB2, it would be a ballot vote, or the other option for us trying to correct it would be to, um, do an abatement for those affected properties, to give them the credit this year, and then to correct it next year on the, the warrant, on the ballot.
What would be the, thank you, what would be the, uh, most acco- cost of an effective way to do this without, uh?
Honestly, the abatement, because then you don't have the advertising and holding the special town meeting.
All right. You agree with that?
Yeah, I'm not gonna say, no, I'm not gonna say no, that.
Yeah.
I think it's the right thing to do at this point.
Tim?
Yeah, I agree. What's the difference between the two?
The all-veterans' tax credit includes current as well.
Okay, but you have to have both.
Active members, correct.
Does that include those who are in garden reserve?
You don't have to have both, but it is a great service to, or it's a great credit to have.
But what I'm saying, the newer one doesn't cover both.
Correct.
Right, newer would cover the, exactly the old 750, um.
Yeah, now, did that include the garden reserve? I don't recall seeing that.
Hmm, I'm not sure if it does or not. I'm not.
Okay.
I'll just speed on the...
Probably one of the questions we probably should've asked, but, uh, maybe next year. Uh, so, do you need, you need a motion for that?
Yes.
John, you wanna do a motion?
Um, I make a motions, uh, I don't wanna say this. For an abatement?
Yeah, probably to proceed with...
Now, we're gonna notify all of them, or we'll just take the past ones from last year and do it?
Yeah.
I notice that we make an abatement for the 30 veterans that are currently receiving the all-veterans' tax credit totaling $22,500.
Second.
Motion made by John Moran, seconded by Steve Welch. All in favor?
Uh, just to clarify that I mean, would it include any new, like, if anybody was to apply that didn't, was not included last year?
If they were not included last year, I think the way we would handle is they'd have to wait until we put it in a warrant article for next year, is that correct?
Yes, or you could handle it as a separate abatement.
Or a separate, well, we'd make a separate...
They have until April 15th to apply for the 2023 tax year, so.
Yeah, so anybody after that would have to wait anyhow, so, yeah.
So anything comes in between now and April 15th, we'll have to have another...
You could handle it individually.
It'll have to be at a public meeting, and we'll just file for another abatement.
Yep.
If it comes in the next...
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Tim? No, and you good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, um, in the packet, I've given you a copy of an invitation to bid for the road paving that Sean has come up with. Um, he is looking to proceed with paving the steep section around Pond Road for better truck traction during the winter season. Right now, even with chains on the vehicles, uh, they're struggling to get up the hill, and it's, it's tearing it up. It's also not good for the equipment, so, um, obviously, the plan is to continue with Deerfield Road, um, eight-to-10 inch grind of existing pavement, paving and handwork for a two-and-a-half inch base course, and then inch-and-a-half wearing course, shouldering the new asphalt both sides with three-quarter crushed gravel and handwork. There's also, um, Flutter Street and Oak Ridge Drive that are factored into that last part. Um, round Pond Road would require, would require finish grade compacting and paving up to three inches, so.
And how far up the hill?
It's 700, or it's 800 feet in length, between 775 and 800 feet. It's the really steep portion.
Right, right. Um, any discussion on that?
I don't know, I mean, I, how many, how many people does Round Pond Road actually serve? That, that's my biggest concern. I think there's, uh...
I was thinking of the same thing.
Free residents, and now we're gonna spend paving money to...
I think.
Not, not that it's not called for, don't get me wrong, but, uh, money might be better spent on another road for pavement, but.
And that's why this is up for discussion before it goes out to bid.
Just my personal thoughts.
I'm on the same mindset.
I would like to see it go out to bid for another 800 feet, maybe on another road, so the bid process wouldn't be hampered. Might even be a little less, we might not have to do as much work to prepare the base before paving.
Have the residents expressed concern?
No.
There's only like two or three residents on that road, right? Yeah.
I mean, it gets a lot of use in the summertime.
It's only the winter that we have an issue as far as getting the vehicles up there, but we don't need to be bringing our brand-new, uh, 10-wheelers up there either. You know, that could be handled by a smaller truck. I know I plowed that road in the past.
I'm sure it's not fun.
Yes, it's, it's a pain, but, uh, it can be done.
Yeah, my son would talk to you.
Buy a brand-new 350.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There you go. I'm not in favor of doing that. Uh, paving the, the, the round pond road.
At least not right now.
Right, correct.
I agree.
Okay, unanimous.
All right. Courtney has provided a, excuse me, um, a memo on what she would like to do with the recreation space. There's two options here for you to consider. Um, one of them is obviously expanding into this room and moving this meeting space into the community center, um, or possibly redoing the community center and relocating down there, so options to ponder. I know this has come up in the past. Um, we're just looking for some direction as to which way you would like to...
Did you ask the staff that works down there if they want all of the?
It, it would definitely be in our best interest to keep it here, closer to this end of the building, if there is going to be a change. I'm, I'm in support of that.
Yeah, that, that was the initial discussion at first, because the gym and all that stuff, keep them up this, up this way, and then...
Plus, it gives them access to a store.
Yeah, and just move the, uh, conference room down there, which will need some configuration and all that up down there, of course, so, um...
Well, in order to get everybody a desk, now, they have the desk in the, where the refrigerator is, the cleaning supplies, if you've been in there, there's a, a workspace.
Is it better to have the recreation department here, or did we ever think about moving them down where the building inspector is, and then move that room across the hall?
The, the initial reason why they, they were wanting this particular room is because of the gym, right over here, where all their activities are being held outside, and as John had pointed out, the door right here.
No, I get it.
So, that was initially, keep everything up front altogether closely, as opposed to, you know, now you're gonna have people running up and down the hallway, what have you, disrupting possibly, uh, other offices down there, or...
First mode of entry, if we had a problem, is that front door, though.
Yes. Yeah, but you got exits out the gym, and you got an exit out here, too.
And an active shooter.
And she, also, there was an idea of actually putting a doorway here.
Yeah.
So, directly from our office into this room.
And the, and the other thing is, too, i- if, if they were to expand down there, their only course of action, as far as in putting it doors, out the back door, right into the, where the police park all their vehicles.
So the only...
Safety-wise, that wouldn't work.
Right, and that's why I suggested maybe the other side of...
The, the big building back there?
No, no, just where the, where Dale and, um, our assessing department is, because they don't need an outside door, but...
I mean, that would work, but again, uh, I mean, their offices are literally right on the other side of this wall.
I know. It makes sense.
But it's the majority of what the board wants to do, so.
No, it makes sense. The, just throwing out ideas.
Yeah. Are you looking for a?
Decision tonight?
I don't think I need a decision tonight. Um, if you could just, you know, keep this in mind, and we can bring it back up next week.
Okay. Yeah, well, she's not even ready to go either way. Is she, the plans are not even drawn up, right? No, okay.
No, but that's what she would like to start with.
Make a decision on which?
Yeah, which, which way we're going, whether it's in that space or this.
I mean, do you folks feel comfortable making a decision tonight in regards to that, or?
I think I'd prefer to wait, so maybe I can go back and, and look at what we're gonna, um, be revamping and make a sound decision on...
Tim?
And I think you should actually see the physical plan, and maybe talk to Courtney, both of you guys, to know what she's discussed with us in the past, of what her vision is, so maybe you can get a better understanding of what you feel comfortable doing, because I'm still a little up in the air with the, the money wise on it, so.
Yeah, all right, so why don't we do that, the, the, the board members can get with Courtney?
Pay for it until, yeah, next week.
Anything else, Ellen?
Um, lastly, there is a public meeting next Tuesday on the state park expansion. It is to be held here at the town office. We're trying to figure out the details, because, um, at present, there's already something scheduled in the gymnasium, so, uh, we're trying to figure out the overflow. For the most part, it's gonna be in here.
I suspect that's probably gonna be...
It sounds like it's gonna be very well attended, so we're, um, we were throwing around some ideas today, maybe keeping it in this building, and then doing an overflow, um, kind of like a Zoom session out of Conference Room Two, to help with the rest of it.
Could we possibly move it to the school?
Um, it's already been advertised, it's not...
Got it, got it.
I, I think it was very well advertised, which is a good thing, it's just we weren't expecting the attendance, and now, we're very well booked, so.
Let me say this, do we really have much of a say on it?
It'll be a good time for you to hear from the state officials.
Right. I think they're gonna do whatever they wanna do, whether we say we want it or don't want it. I mean, it's just like when they take your property from the domain, which they did when they built the park.
Uh, my last two things, eh, the, um, the posted road weight restriction is being lifted officially tomorrow. Uh, Sean was gonna hold off until the 5th, but he did an evaluation of the roads today, and everything seems to be in pretty good shape, plus we're, um, in line with surrounding communities, so that will be lifted tomorrow.
We haven't hit mud season yet.
We're not gonna really have one, because there's no, uh...
Yeah, but we'll get lots of rain. Lot of rain, though. Yeah, all right.
I've driven down a couple of them. I've seen them worse.
We can get the grader running and get these roads back in tip-top shape soon.
And lastly, uh, Betsy has done some research on credit card processing at the transfer station, um, going, moving towards more of a cashless society, but, you know, everybody is...
We're still gonna accept cash, though. If we, if we, uh, if we implement that, we're still gonna take cash?
As of right now, correct.
Absolutely.
Um, so Interware, which is the same software that the town clerk's office offers or uses, that is probably the best bet for us to go with. We're looking at anywhere from $325 to $550 for the terminal purchase. Um, and then there's like a $60 one-time charge in case we damage the equipment. It's, it's like an insurance coverage. Um, so to put it in place, we would need to either hardwire or have it wireless. I would highly recommend a hardwire, because the second you have somebody walking around with a wireless device, especially over there, it could fall out of the pocket, probably get damaged, so it's probably better to have it one stationary location anyways. Um, we would be looking at 2.99% interest rate, and that would be passed on to the consumer, so, and there's a minimum $2.50 fee. So if somebody goes in there for a $10 transaction, it's ultimately gonna cost them $12.50. We get the, we get the $10. Um, so it's just, it's one of those things, is it something that you wanna move forward with? Uh, Betsy's willing to go over there for a day to help train the employees and make sure that they're familiar with using it, and it's just, you know, it's another convenience to provide.
Today's environment, I think it's a must. Who carries, I never thought I'd say this, but...
Who carries cash anymore?
Who carries cash? I know, I never did. I always carried cash, and I yelled at my kids for not carrying cash, and, um, 30 years later...
That's where it is, it's, that's where it's headed, it seems, that, uh...
I know, because Wayne typically has to ask people to come back, and he's taken license plates and stuff like that, so probably be easier for him, if he's not trying to follow up with people next time they come to the dump and police them, and ask for more money. My opinion.
Come on, John, I know you wanna say something.
You got an opinion, state it.
I hope there's enough transactions to warrant this, um, and that it does make this easier for people and not more difficult. Um, as some situations arose in the past, interactions sometimes can be difficult, and this is even, uh, another one-on-one. I'm just...
But that's an issue that should be addressed, if that's an issue.
Sure.
How much money do we generate at the dump annually?
Transfer station, recycling center?
Which I don't have my town report with me.
Right there, right. That would be my first question. I mean, is it $100? Is it $1,000? Is it $5,000?
Well, the, we don't make money with the recycling center.
I totally get that. I'm just saying, how much...
But basically, the, the, the goods that we try to recycle and get money for is just to offset the cost of it.
Right.
Which, over ye- over the past, I don't know, at least five years anyway, since I've been on the board, it's been going down as far as what we can get from materials. Now, COVID had a lot to do with that as well. There's not as many shipping companies out there, people are less willing to take our, our plastics and so on, so that all has to factor into it. Um, you know, I, I, obviously Nottingham wants to protect its first-in-the-nation recycling center and, and so on, but at some point, there's gonna be some hard decisions we may have to make in regards to what materials we are recycling over there, what are we charging? You know, there's thoughts of throwing in a $50, uh, dump stickers and all that stuff around, and maybe going up on fees or whatever, but at the same time, too, I mean, some of this is paid through taxes as well.
I can tell you that a week ago Thursday, I think they had about $300 in fees that were collected in that one day alone. Um, other times, it's been $600 over a weekend, so.
If that's a, uh, the going trend, I mean, that, that, that itself would pay for the, uh, right, machine. It's more of a convenience thing, is how I view it.
To the consumer.
Yeah, to the consumer.
As long as you position in the right spot.
Yeah.
So that it's not congested and that little, or, or, we just plan it to be the right area, so it's easy for people to get in and get out.
So not in the office?
Well, that office is quite cramped and quite, but, I mean, that's where the computer is, too, so, but...
Well, there's nothing to run a cable, they can't run a ca- they can run a cable.
Yeah, I'm just thinking outside the box, just trying to make sure that it's, again, if it makes it easier, fine. You know, electronics is something where we charge for, and if you went over, opened that, uh, that bin, you could see that, it's quite full at times, so, with TVs and...
But we purchased it, and if we, we find it isn't useful at the recycling center, we can always move that base to another spot that it would benefit, I'm assuming.
I can't imagine that, that, that they wouldn't be able to get the use out of it. I'm pretty sure they're...
I can't either, I'm just saying that it's not like we're throwing money away.
So I'm getting the senses that we should move forward with it? Is that what I'm hearing?
As a person that's had to drive back to my house to get cash multiple times?
Okay.
That's my experience when I've been at the dump selling our merchandise for the three hundred. I can't tell you how many people have said, ah, I gotta run back to the house.
Yeah, John?
Well, we already decided at last meeting, which will bring you guys up to favor too, is that we, since our dump policies haven't changed or anything, our written, uh, policies haven't been addressed since two thousand and seven.
Maybe it's starting?
That, you know, we should have time some, you know, coming up to start revamping that and making sure that, uh, all the policies are up to date and done since it's been, you know, sixteen years, uh, since last looked at. Um, and that's policies on, you know.
So who would be responsible for doing that? One of us with?
We are gonna actually go over the policy here as a, as a board.
Yeah.
Like, we have a whole, it's in the, um, well, you don't have an old packet, so you don't have it, but it was in our old packet. Uh, recycling trash disposal policy. So, and this was read, this was done back, again, two thousand and seven, so. There's a lot of stuff on here that have changed and that are no longer relevant, so.
Yeah, we should probably make that, some of these policies, we should probably make a priority to, uh, move forward, revamping it.
Well, we just gotta get it on the schedule where we can talk about it. You know, cause again, there's items and stuff that need to be changed. So that'll have to be put on one of our agendas.
Talking about it at the next meeting?
Depending what's on the next meeting.
Okay.
Cause this should be a a decent discussion for time wise. I don't think it's something we're gonna blow through in five minutes.
No.
Uh, with everything on there, so you're probably gonna at least allocate, you know, a half hour or longer. What?
Start the review process and then maybe.
Well, I think everybody, if you guys haven't read this, since you guys are involved, is that to go take a peek at what this, I've read it. Uh, there's changes I've already made on here, uh, from stuff that we've changed, you know, we don't have a swap shed anymore. You know, so there should be no scrapping. Well, obviously, we allow people to go in the dumpsters and take things now for, uh, a vote that we had.
Right.
Um, there's no more one dollar fee. Do we address the fee? Uh, so there's quite a bit of different things that are in this, uh, policy, which I think needs to be addressed, so.
I don't think we'd be ready to discuss it next week, I think that's probably.
I, I mean, again, some of it's, I think it's, before we put it off any further, I think it should be somewhere on the agenda in the next month or so.
Yeah, how about we do this then? Why don't we make sure that, you know, Tim and, uh, Steve get the copy of this and maybe set something aside for May, to do a review, give you guys some time to.
Do we have two, well, do we have two more? Um, we have two more meetings this month, or one?
One more, if we, we adopted the first and third, uh, Monday.
Yeah.
Unless we feel like this is enough to warrant a separate meeting.
And that's up to you guys, I mean.
So that's something too, you know, if we we sh- if we were considering changing anything in here that would add to costing people money, you know, the fee change or anything like this, then we should automatically have a public hearing to get the public's input on what is being suggested. So that's why, you know, if you guys wanna take a peek at it, look at it, you know, we could have a meeting, you know, and just general conversation. And then if we feel after that meeting, there's things that we need to address and have it publicly, well, it's gonna be, every meeting's gonna be public, but to bring public input in, you know, if there's significant changes that we're making to this policy, there might not be any.
Yeah.
That's something we have to discuss.
Alright.
I mean, you guys have done the legwork already on it, or a fair amount of legwork.
Well, I mean.
You've looked at it, you've had a month of, at least a few weeks to ponder on it.
General practice, we'd like to have everybody's input from the board.
I get it, I get it.
No hard decision, no hard decisions have been made, other than, you know, we've lax the, uh, the bag requirement, so.
And it's something also when we're sitting there, is we might wanna take a note of what our current fees are and just cross-reference those. Yeah, cross-reference those with what the disposal fees are, to make sure that they're, they're fair and equitable to the town and to the people. And that we're not, you know, undercharging or overcharging for some of these things. You know, not that I think there's a big demand for more used tires and that that price should be down, but never know.
Okay. Any else, Ellen?
That is it.
Okay. Any action item reviews from last meeting? I think we had, are we doing? You remember, John?
No, it's just.
I don't see it either, okay. Assessing. What, what, what time is our meeting?
In our public?
Yeah.
Seven thirty-ish.
Okay, alright, list of the timeline. Uh, assessing? Have you already had an opportunity to look this over?
I mean. So you guys have any questions on anything about assessing?
No, I read through it.
I think it was pretty straightforward.
Okay. Mass, cause you're new, you know, I'm, we've looked at it a hundred times for ourselves over the years, so I wanted to make sure you guys were comfortable.
Alright, does somebody, uh, break this up, you know, intend to cut, be separate, you know, excavation? John, you're pretty good at that, right?
Start with the first one. Make a motion to approve, uh, map nineteen, lot eleven for the abatement.
Tim DeBrio, second.
Okay, Tim DeBrio, second, motion made by John Moran, all in favor?
Steve Welch, aye.
John Moran, aye.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Tim DeBrio, aye.
Passed.
Uh, next one is, we'll do two here. We'll do for map sixty-nine, lot ten, excavation yield tax, uh, sorry. Map sixty-nine, lot ten, excavation yield tax, and also map sixty-nine, lot ten, excavation intent.
Second.
There we have a motion made by John Moran, seconded by Steve Welch. All in favor?
Aye, John Moran, I'm sorry.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Motion passes.
Uh, this is for the intent to cut for the two lots. Uh, one is map twenty-three, uh, lot L two for an intent to cut supplemental, and the other is map fifteen, lot one dash seven for an intent to cut.
Second.
Motion made by John Moran, seconded by Steve Welch, all in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
And the last.
Motion passes.
Sorry, and the last is for land use change tax. That is for map forty-nine, lot four dash one, land use change tax.
Second.
Uh, motion made by John Moran, seconded from Steve Welch, all in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Motion passes. General business? Election where, and, uh, representatives to the committees will be postponed to the next meeting. If not, uh, not all board members can make it by the next meeting, we'll proceed forward with, uh, the election of officers and reps to the committees. Any other business?
Can I just make a motion that John do- does them all?
I know he's hot to trot for the planning, right? Is it planning?
I just like the planning, but I'm not hot to trot for any of them, trust me, they got enough on my plate that.
Um, Jen Phillips is here to talk about the library director.
Oh, yes, yes.
Um, a portion of it, we will probably have to enter into non-public, but I think.
She's aware what section of that is, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
It's me again.
Evening.
Hi, and welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, make sure you state your, your name, full name.
Jen Phillips, Seventeen Rocky Hill, and I am the chair of the Blaisdell Memorial Library Trustees. We have lost our library director.
Okay.
Her last day was Friday, um, and we, as you know, or those of you who are on the committee previously know, um, salaries have been an issue, uh, this is a nationwide problem. Um, during the pandemic, a lot of people who were close to retirement just decided to retire. That next level of mid-level management kind of got a little bit beat up and a lot of them have left the profession. So, there are not many MLIS, that's the degree, um, that they go through, uh, people out there, and it's driving up salaries, point blank. Our neighboring towns, one of them now has our former director. Uh, she went to Barrington and, um, is closer to home and received about a twenty percent pay increase. So, we are, you know, I, I know that things are tough and we have a very tight budget. What the trustees have considered and, uh, is looking for an interim director who would serve, hopefully, for this calendar year while we work with whomever we need to work with to get the salary level that we need in next year's budget. The perfect solution would be for me to go back to the trustees and say, they found a pot of money. We can, we can offer a market salary and hire a full-time director. Um, I also am, uh, living in this planet, in this world, so I know that that's not gonna happen. Um, so I'll stop right now and see if there are any questions with what I've said so far.
I just got a quick question, um, the position itself. Is it, library busy enough to warrant a full-time position? Can this be done?
Is busy enough to warrant two full-time positions.
Okay, okay.
Um, we had Liz, who was full-time forty hours, and Dan, who is full-time hourly at thirty-seven hours. Um, and even then, we are stretched because out of the seven remaining employees that we have, two are pages, so they're high school students. Um, not a whole lot of availability during the day. Um, one is a person who is responsible for like the baby storytime hours, so she's only a few hours a week. So that's right there, out of seven, three are very, very sporadic part-time. Um, one has a part-time job that she manages with this part-time job, so she kinda cobbles together full-time between two part-time jobs. And then one other part-time, and that's it. And it's, it, we have, the storytimes on Fridays, we've exceeded capacity a couple of times. It's extremely popular, um, most of our programming is full. Um, so, yeah.
You know, uh, you know, the more I look at, uh, some of the programs that you had, uh, you know, library offers to include our rec department as well, I, I'm just amazed that this, how much you folks have done with, with, with so little. Uh, it, it's just, you know, hats off to you, to you guys, uh, I, you know, it's just phenomenal, and especially in a day and age where libraries aren't, uh, as what they were in the past, you know, everybody's going online and researching stuff, but you folks still get people coming in the door and that, that, that's, uh, not an easy thing to do.
Our, our new children's librarian, well, new, who's, I guess she's been there for well over a year, but still feels new to me, um, is doing a phenomenal job bringing in educational programs. They had a squid dissection that they thought was gonna be for kids and they had adults sign up for it, so it was kind of everybody. Um, it's, I think a lot of it has to do with the engagement with the community, and then also the library is one of the few areas of recreational things, it serves all ages.
Yeah.
So from an infant all the way to, to senior gaming gab, so.
So, it, it sounds to me, and I'm sure the board, uh, senses this as well, that, that the issue is pay.
But it's gonna be pay across the board.
Yeah.
It can't be just one person.
No, 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 it's, I imagine it's across the board, especially where our, the, uh, surrounding to communities, as she clearly pointed out. They're making more and they're, we're losing people to them.
We've had two positions open. We were fully staffed for two weeks in October of twenty twenty-one. We've had two positions open that we've not been able to fill because of the salaries we're offering. One person who left was making eleven dollars an hour. Which is, that was in June when she left, that's, it's just not enough.
Well. So here's the number that, what would be the number? So if you took the, the budget line of the full salary for all the employees that work there, what we're paying, what would be the amount of increase that you think you would need in order to properly staff?
That is the one bit of math I did not do.
Well, cause I think, and I asked that, I only think, cause I think most people, you know, around, myself in general, is that's what people are gonna see, is the library line going up fifty thousand dollars? Is it going up fifteen thousand dollars to fully, to pay more? Or twenty, cause that's how people are gonna really realize what the value of what you're asking for. And I think they'll give everybody a better understanding of saying, okay, and you might, I mean, and maybe it goes to vote, maybe, you know, it's us that we can approve it here, I don't know if we even got that far yet, but you know, I think the community, cause I mean, I know how busy it is there, I've seen the car parking lot gets filled and I've had friends with their kids that are down there, and they think the storytime is great.
Yeah.
You know, it's the summertime, those, when kids are out and stuff like this, they're gonna be more needed and you're gonna see a higher thing, so. You know, I mean, there's gonna be some people that are gonna nay say against it. But, you know, if, if the community supports it majorit-, you know, and, you know, the record of, would be nice to come in front of us too, is I'm sure they keep a tally of how many are actually attending? So that we know too, so that we know that the average storytime for Friday morning is twenty, you know, mom or dads with their, with their child on that particular, or what the events are actually coming. Cause we get that kind of answer from when we talk to the rec department, about like the programs they're asking to be funded. You know, one of the questions we always ask is, well, are you asking us to fund a, a program that's helping ten people? Or is this a program that's being entertained by four hundred residents? You know, and that thing gives us, me, myself, a better understanding of where maybe money should be allocated. You know, or what we can do.
Sure.
You know, in order to help it out and still be fair to the community for not being overly, you know, priced out.
We keep track of, of all of that, we keep track of volunteer hours, we keep track of the number of attendees.
Oh, I know you guys, sure.
Um, and volunteer hours, that's actually, um, one of the more important things. We save thousands of dollars a year because two community members volunteer their time, and that is a bookkeeper and our IT work. Most libraries have to pay for that, we get it gratis. And it's, it literally saves us thousands of dollars a year. If you can imagine the number of IT issues when you have the general public just using the, the computers, it's.
You know, that's something too, to forecast for yourself, what that position is. Because someday, that will probably not be the case that we're so fortunate about.
We're starting to see it in other departments.
We do keep track of it, and I think that we did an estimate, it would have added between six to seven thousand dollars to our, our budget.
For the year?
For, for both of them, for the bookkeeper and the, the IT.
So we're just talking twelve to fourteen thousand?
Oh, no, total six thousand. See, he's in there, just, he comes in, complete, cleans them up. That doesn't sound like much to you, but it is in, in the context of our budget.
I'm just, anybody with, works on a computer, I feel like this, you're gonna be like thirty-five bucks an hour, I don't know, I don't know what they do, so, but.
But we do keep track of that because we know that it can't last forever. And right now, the trustees are dividing up a lot of the, um, administrative and maintenance duties that, that Liz tackled because we just, it's the only way we can figure out how to keep everything covered in this time period.
Well, I don't think a decision will be made tonight, but, uh, it's.
Well, we should also put on a thing is that, um, coming up, our first quarter review of our budget and where we stand.
Yeah.
As a, a budget to where it was passed, so that we have an understanding of where, if it's possible, that if there is money that is out there that could be allocated if we decide to shift around in order to make something, you know, whatever we can do.
I'm not sure.
Possible, but.
I don't know if it's helpful or not. Um, but I estimate that if we were to post for this position for a full-time person, um, the most recent budget had, would have had our prior director at fifty-six thousand. We would probably need to post the position between, for sixty-two to sixty-five. And if we wait until next year, I'd add another twenty-five hundred onto that, both ends of, or the top end of those. Just the way that numbers are going locally. And that is, it is the local, um, that seems to be the bigger issue than even the size. And that is, it is the local, um, that seems to be the bigger issue than even the size, I know that, um, Wolfboro is currently looking, theirs is posted, the high end is eighty. And one of the smaller towns around them have now adjusted theirs to that bracket, because they're competing in that neighborhood, essentially. So it's, it's more important who your neighbors are than really, uh, how big your town is, or how much money you bring in, that's how it ends up.
Do you have hard numbers for the surrounding communities?
Um, not anything recent, this is the annoying thing about the state, um, library thing, they're in the process of getting the salary data, as a matter of fact, it was one of the last things that Liz completed before she left, was to upload all of that. Um, so all of the information from twenty-twenty-two is now being uploaded and will be available in a few months, I still have twenty-twenty-one information, it's the only hard information I have. Other than I know what she got offered when she left to a neighboring town.
Okay. I would like to see the hard numbers of what the surrounding communities, uh, are offering their, their librarians, uh.
So that would be a year old when it, when it comes in?
Yeah.
So.
But it gives us a starting point, as opposed to something that's two years old.
And I can also estimate, this is one of the things that I was doing today, was looking at roughly what it looked like as far as their annual increases. So.
Do we have a, a, a job description of what's, what the librarian, her duties are?
With me, but yeah, we do have.
Can you provide that?
Sure.
As, for the next, as well.
Do you think it's gonna be possible to find an interim?
I actually spoke with someone today interested in doing it.
Oh, um, positive.
He was a, a director in Portsmouth and, um, has actually served as an interim to two other libraries, this is now a thing because there are no directors out there. It's taking, I think, between twenty-seven and thirty-something weeks to fill these positions, even with good salaries, yeah. Um, and, you know, I'm interested in continuing the conversation with him. Um, it would, we would have to adjust our expectations of the number of hours he could be available. Um, but it might still be worth it, uh, given the fact that he knows what he's doing, and the trustees are just kind of. Filling in where we can, um, it might, it might help move things more smoothly, even though.
Well, is he like more of a part-timer?
Yeah, he would be, he would do it for part-time, twenty hours a month, or twenty hours a week type of thing.
As a part-timer, you could give them a little more. Cause it's, you got the full-time position that's, that's, you know, funded.
Benefited.
Yeah. That's something, that's why I was asking originally, you know, can this be done with a part-time, but based on what you're saying, you, we really need two people.
We, we need two full-time people, and I, and we now have to watch, uh, you know, Dan, since he is part-time, or full-time hourly. He then qualifies for time and a half, anything over forty hours.
Dan's still with us, though.
Pardon me?
Dan is still with us.
Yes, yes, he is absolutely fantastic, and, uh, keeps things humming and is ready to jump in and help and do whatever he can, but, you know, the, the budget. Has to be considered too, um, it's.
So you willing to step up?
This, if, this would be a discussion for non-public.
Yes. Just saying.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, other than, than a thank you, you, you all were extraordinary, extraordinarily supportive.
Yeah.
When we came last year and asked for increases in salaries, and I, I feel, um, badly that we're here asking again, um, but that is the market we're in right now.
I think that's, everybody's facing that.
And I know you know that, and I knew I wasn't coming in here with a, an earth-shattering, um, claims, so.
Do we need to make an approval for them to go out and pursue a interim? Librarian or?
No, because I believe your library trustees have the authority to hire their own. But they're just vegetarian oversight.
Alright.
But for the interim, the money would be there, right now, currently?
The money would be there, yes. We, we do have the amount that was appropriated for, for the full-time director's salary, and it's just a matter of, of. Sitting down and doing a lot of math, which.
Would he be willing to hang on until we find a person, or is this only thinking short-term for him?
For the interim?
Yeah.
Yeah, he is exclusively an interim, he's, he is working on other projects, this is something that he has discovered a niche need for, and, um, and enjoys helping out. Um, so, I, I think that it could possibly work, um, if we can figure out how to make sure everything gets done.
Okay. Alright. Anything else?
Not at this time, so.
Nope, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, we only have a few minutes left before our seven-thirty appointment. Is there any other business that we need to discuss prior to going into non-public?
Are you have people here?
Hmm?
It's up to you.
Um. If nobody has any other business. You have a few minutes to, you know, if you're here to say something, I'm gonna walk and come up for a few minutes until we go into non-public here, the floor's open now.
So I can go, hi, hello. Hi, Maureen Campiola, five, Gary, um, back in, I think, October or November, I approached the board asking for, um. The opportunity to have a page dedicated on the town website where both the Nottingham Republicans and the Nottingham Democrats could. Just have an informational page that says Nottingham Dems meet here on this day, this time, Nottingham Republicans meet this day, this time, whatever. And John, um. The interim, yeah, town administrator piped up and said that that was not allowed. That didn't sound right to me, and so I went and dug around, did my homework, and was in contact with, uh, basically the people who oversee the. Websites for the government, for GOV, you know, dot GOVs, and had a conversation with this guy and an email back and forth, and I told him exactly what I just said to you guys here. And he said, that's not true, that as far as he was concerned, as the overseer, as long as that was what it was limited to, informational only. That there would be absolutely no reason that the town should prohibit us from doing that. So I'm coming forth again, I waited until John was gone and the new board was on, so that I could ask the board to reconsider, so that. When new people move into town, they know where to find whichever political party they want to be affiliated with, and they know where we are and how to find us. And, um. So I'm asking for reconsideration on that issue, and I can forward, I have the email, Ellen, I can forward that email to you. That basically says exactly what I just said to you, um, that John was wrong.
So why don't we, you know, we'll review it, and then we'll come back to decide a later date, you know?
Yes.
Can you just provide your name for the record?
Pardon me?
Can you provide your name for the record?
Maureen Campiola.
Thank you.
The town would be in charge, still of the website and the content that's put on. For what it says, so literally, it's basically just going to say, this date here, we meet, this date here, we meet, this time only, nothing else.
Nothing else.
No link.
And I made that clear to him.
Yeah, no links, no, nothing.
Um, I, I don't know if a link, if, I know the Democrats have a, a website, I don't see any reason why you couldn't put a website, but I don't know, I know that. For instance, I'll give you a, for an example. So, right now, the town newsletter that gets published, you guys post a link on that town newsletter. You, you post the link to it, and the link goes out, and technically, that shouldn't be allowed, that link should not be allowed to be on the town website. And the reason for that is because that newsletter contains advertising. And so because of the advertising, that link shouldn't even be on the website, because you cannot have advertising on that, on that platform. Now, the newsletter people could revamp that newsletter that goes through the link, remove all the advertising, so that people can still find the content without the advertisement on it. And then technically, that's really what you're supposed to be doing. So, I don't know if, I'm, I would say no, I would say, we don't need to get into links and all that other stuff, it's purely informational, I'm new in town, I wanna join the Nottingham Republican Committee, I don't know where these people are, how do I find them? They go to the town website, oh, there it is, there's a little tab, they click on it, they say, oh, here's the Dems, they, they're over here, they meet on this day, at this time, in this location. And that is the extent to the content that I'm suggesting.
So what, we'll, uh, once we get the information, we'll, we'll review it, and then we'll come back at it later.
Your email is on the town website now, I would imagine.
It's the same one that John was using.
Yeah, okay, then I'll just forward it to you.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
So, if you wanna have anything else to say, we're gonna go right into non-public, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, Maureen. Folks, we're gonna go into non-public now, so, uh. Appreciate y'all coming.
How many people you brought in? I was gonna say, it's not, normally this many people here.
Yeah, Jen, did you have a chance to look at that blue folder?
Hmm?
I just put a summary in there.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you all had a chance to take a look at it or not.
I thought to show that somebody would have. I thought it was up right here, I thought it was gonna be a lot more of a. Unless there's nothing going on in Nottingham tonight, that's for sure.
Steve needs a picture, so.
Thank you.
Steve, why don't you go, or John, whoever.
Sit there, Steve.
You wanna sit in front of your lady?
No, 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 no. Put the older guys in the middle and the youngest on the side? I do need all these guys.
Tuition.
Tuition? Thank you, Steve.
Have, uh, you guys?
Uh, wait a second, we have, uh, two things here. Which weren't, um. We have one, Fon, um, Fon Woodman, need signatures for her.
As an agent?
For the, yep.
We haven't gotten it on public yet, we can probably knock that out right now, right?
Yeah, I believe you've already approved it, it's just a matter of.
I always say.
Yes, Steve. Status is on paid and me, leave. Administrative leave, yes. Yeah.
Paid administrative.
Yep, yep, okay.
Anything else you'd say for Karen for the library?
Pardon me?
No.
Well, we need to make a motion to go into non-public.
Are we going to non-public per RSA A or is it B?
A.
A? Uh, I make motions that the Nottingham Select Board go into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three dash A.
Second?
Uh, motion made by John Morin, seconded from Steve Welch, all in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Morin.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Thank you, Nottingham.